Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. We've got our Licensing Board here in a full quorum tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our Licensing Board minutes from February 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is the Racing House new Class B beer license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions on this one? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And our last item is Quick Trip, numbered 1058, Change of Agent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our Licensing Board is adjourned.
I would like to call the order of the Board of Public Works. We have four items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of minutes from a regular meeting, February 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, second. Alderman Schmidt. Any deletions or corrections? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Order for Removal and Replacement of Sidewalks Under Contract 2501. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is a request and order for removal of sidewalks along contract, the project for Contract 2501, which will include both the reconstruction of Kilborn Avenue from Main Street to Indian Avenue and of Third Avenue from Sycamore to Chestnut. So this is a typical sidewalk order that we present to the Board and Council in order for the Finance Department to be able to invoice the property owners where we do share costs with them on the replacement of sidewalks.
Are there any? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Sparts. Any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Order for Removal and Replacement of Sidewalks Under Contract 2503.
Thank you again. This is the same type of order, this time for Contract 2503, which is for the reconstruction of Edgewood Lane from Wisconsin to Indiana. So same kind of order to remove and replace sidewalk along this project.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen?
Second.
What's the second? Alderwoman Seizer? Okay. Any questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, Approval of Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement, W-08-01. Amendment number two, Manitow.
Thank you. This item is a typical stormwater management maintenance agreement. Every time the city issues a permit, or if there's an amendment to an existing permit, the city enters an agreement with the property owner to make sure that the stormwater management facilities will be built and maintained in the future so they can function as intended from the design date. So this is where Manitow changed a portion of their property to build a loading dock, and they had to modify their stormwater management permit. And then this agreement is to ensure that they will maintain the stormwater management facilities in the future.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen and second.
Second.
Alderman Sparts. Any questions for Max on that? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as Chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee this evening. We have two agenda items. The first is the approval of minutes from our Finance Committee regular meeting on February 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, additions, deletions? There being none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second agenda item is a Resolution Number 73 to
Accept Donations to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. This evening, we approved very generous and very impressive donations to present to the community. The first donation of $4,800 was donated by Gary Britton for the purchase of acoustic panels for inside the community room at the Beach House. We've got a bad echo in there. Gary was in there for a meeting and said, "I want to help make some changes and improve the quality of this room." Gary has been a longtime friend of our department, the Black Leader Conservancy, and certainly our community. The second donation this evening of $25,000 was donated by the West Bend Friends of Park and Recreation for the purchase, to assist at the purchase and development of the Aqua Park Inflatables for Regner Park. Huge thank you to our Friends Organization. They often or annually step forward with many types of donations that support our parks and activities, and we just want to say thank you to them this evening for their commitment to our Aqua Park.
Second.
Thank you, Alderwoman Seizer and Alderman Allen. Any questions or comments for Mike? Alderman Sparts?
Just want to express our gratitude, thanks to the donors, excuse me, the donors.
I too wish to offer my appreciation to these organizations and individuals, again, for their very generous donations that go a long way to supporting the quality of life that we have here in West Bend. Without these types of donors, we know that these types of things that are at our parks, our facilities, simply don't happen at the levels that they are, that we all as community members get to. So much appreciated. Alderman Allen?
I just want to admonish the Parks and Rec Director for putting the pressure on us to approve the Westbury Bank naming later in this meeting. It's undue influence. Thank you. I too appreciate the generosity of these individuals and organizations.
We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Mike. With no further business between the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Good evening. It's Monday, February 17th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, the husband.
Thank you. I invite you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize the quorum of our Common Council here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our regular meeting minutes held on, for the Common Council meeting, held on February 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief, we have an oath of office for Police Officer Hunter Schroeder or Schrader?
Schrader.
Schrader tonight.
Thank you for giving us the time to, once again, you're my microphone, but I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to introduce our newest team member and to both you, a little bit more importantly, to the community as well. So Hunter Schrader comes from us from Sheboygan, so kind of a local kid. Graduated from Sheboygan North in 2022, went right into Lakeshore Technical College, where he earned his Associate's Degree in Police Science. They have an integrated recruit school, so he graduated with recruit school in December of 2024. I see a lot of proud faces over here. This is something Hunter's wanted to do almost his entire life, was to be a police officer. So we're glad to have him. Throughout our hiring process, both the assessment centers, testing, and our background, one, well, two words stuck out for Hunter, and that was work ethic. So we are, he's going to be a great fit for us here at West Bend PD and within our community. So with that, I'd invite Hunter's mom, Janelle, come on up and pin his badge. While we're accomplishing that, as most of you know, it's symbolic that we have the family pin on the badge, symbolize two things. You can stay up with us, Mom. Symbolize two things. One is our thanks to the family for getting Hunter to where he is. 20 years of getting him prepared to be a public servant and a police officer. We're very thankful for everything you've done to get him to this point, to help protect and serve our community. But two, to also give you a homework assignment. Our job becomes all encompassing. We need you to make sure that Officer Schrader remains Hunter Schrader, that he understands a full life means a whole person, and a whole person is a much better police officer.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll take your word for it. So with that, we'll have Jaleen step up to issue his oath of office.
Just turn your head. If you want to face me. Picture's good.
This, this one?
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Hunter Schrader.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
As a, as a police officer?
As a police officer.
In the city of West Bend?
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support?
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully?
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of set office?
Of set office.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have you signed here, please?
Congratulations, Officer Schrader.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Just get used to me moving your arms.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Crossing Guard, yeah. Do you want to kick that one off, or you want me to?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I appreciate, again, giving us the opportunity to also take some time to thank and recognize a very important part of the West Bend Police Department team, and that's our adult crossing guards. Our adult school crossing guards, it's also the State of Wisconsin's Crossing Guard Week, so we decided to make sure to celebrate in line with the state. But more importantly, to take a moment to just really reflect on what our adult crossing guards mean. So if we could, at this time, crossing guards, come on up.
You're just in front of the podium, and we're actually facing the unit.
So what strikes me is as a, and really, I'm not sure I've ever really made it the point that I should have, is that they're not a separate entity. These are members of the West Bend Police Department. They're part of our team. They're a very visible part of our team that helps to protect and serve our community, our most valuable assets in our community, our most vulnerable, and that's our youngest pedestrians, our students, as they come back and forth to school. Over the years, you've heard us talk about what a tough job it is. You know it's a tough job, community. You see them out there on the cold days, on the rainy days, snowy days. You must know they split their days, so split shifts throughout the day. They dedicate an entirety of a day to make sure that our kids are safe. What really strikes me, those three things. One, they are a very visible reminder of protect and serve. They're out in front of those school zones every day to remind our motoring public, hey, slow down. There's kids crossing, there's kids that are coming to school, kids leaving school, and they're a visible reminder for the Police Department, for our community, to take the time to be slow and safe as you traverse those schools. Second, they're guardians. When I think about this, they are a part of a group, not just the Police Department, but a part of a group that agrees to help us raise our kids to be happy, healthy, productive members of society. They're there to get them to school and get them home. They're there to probably be the first part of that team, to greet them with a smile, to give them a hello, you're on your way to learning, or, good for you, you made it through another day, let's get you home, don't forget to do your homework, and, I'll be here tomorrow. I'll be here tomorrow to help you get back to school. That's a piece that's so valuable, so in line with our protect and serve. I know also, I'm very proud, they're teachers. Every one of you is going to smile when I say this, but I bet in both stern voices and kind voices, you've reminded a lot of our children how to safely cross a road. It struck me that you're referred to as lollipop people. I had never heard that. With your stop signs, you're referred to as the lollipop crew. So I'm thankful for the group that's here today, but I'd like to recognize all of our members. So if I mention your name and you're here, please step forward. But our full Crossing Guard team is Mary Abel, Christine Mannenberg, Carrie Bone, Diane Brundle, Mary Corning, Janet Daly, Nick Denk, Lisa Flitter, Christine Growth, John Growth, Michael Rindell, Catherine Rush, Stephen Rush, Patrick Salanen, Ruth Ann Shaw, Robert Stylen, Sally Taylor, Laura Van Beek, Cliff Van Beek, and Amy Jo Wajowski. Thank you for what you do every day.
While they take a picture, I'm, I'd like to read a proclamation for Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week.
Whereas school crossing guards stand faithfully at their posts along busy intersections in every kind of weather, while dealing with distracted and speeding motorists to complete their charge of safely assisting school children, children across the street. And whereas school crossing guards provide children a familiar face every morning, keep an eye on their well-being, and alert the Police Department to dangerous drivers and driving conditions. And whereas school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of the young people they assess the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. And whereas local declarations, Police Department honors, and especially smiles and kind words from children, help to convey the gratitude of our community for the lifesaving and injury-reducing role that school crossing guards play. Now therefore, for I, Joel Ongert, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim, February 16th through the 22nd, 2025, be designated as Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week, for the wonderful assistance they provide to our schoolchildren. Thank you for all that you do. My kids are now driving to school, so I don't get to see Ruth Ann every morning on the corner. Hi, Ruth Ann. Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for all that you do for the city. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight, items three through eight, and I'll entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Seizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I will entertain a motion now for a honoring Max Marichal for 25 years of service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Where's Max? Max, we're going to make you step up to the podium, which I know you'll love to do. Max Marichal began his career with the City of West Bend as Civil Engineer I on February 28th in the year 2000, and was promoted to Assistant City Engineer on March 31st, 2003, and City Engineer on December 8th, 2013. And whereas Max has successfully designed and administered many construction projects, secured several aid grants, generated special assessment reports, filed annual reports with state agencies, managed the sidewalk and ADA curb ramp replacement programs, and he oversees all facets of the Engineering Department operations, including collaboration with Kunkel Engineering Group, who provides municipal engineering services under contract. And whereas Max provides engineering expertise to other city departments on various public projects, reviews private development projects, is a member of the Plan Commission, and provides opinions and recommendations to the Traffic Safety Commission and Common Council. And whereas, for 25 years, Max has demonstrated exemplary leadership and a commitment to the City of West Bend and its citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin, honors Max Marichal and expresses its deep appreciation for his dedicated service to the City of West Bend. Thank you, Max. Congratulations on 25 years. Thank you, Max. Our next action item tonight is a mayoral appointment of Justice Model to the Parks and Rec Commission. And before I ask for a motion on this, I know that Judy Stuffus, the Washington County Insider, reached out to several Aldermen over the weekend about Justice, and pointed out the fact that Justice, 30 years ago, when he was 23 years old, was a professional male model. And he had posed in Playgirl Magazine. I understand, he got paid for it because he was, that was his job at the time. What I found a little bit interesting is that I know when, when Justice ran for Common Council, that she also covered that story seven years ago. So this wasn't new news to me. I certainly knew about that. And I'd like to think that the voters in our community knew about that as well. They voted for him three times to be an Alderman. And of course, as you all know, serving as an Alderman, you also serve on several different boards, committees, and commissions. So he has already served on Parks and Rec Commission. The reason I like, it's not uncommon that we do get some requests from former Aldermen's or even former Mayors who wish to continue service to the city in some form or fashion, usually serving on a commission or committee. And Justice is one of those. This was a commission that he really enjoyed. He did very well serving on it. He's certainly a cheerleader for, for West Bend, operates a successful business in West Bend. So I just, I'm going to throw that out there to the council. I will ask you guys to, to vote on this. And if you, if you vote no, I'm fine with that. I can bring you another nominee for this position. My personal opinion is, who cares? This was a job. It wasn't a crime. It wasn't, you know, he doesn't have a, you know, an assault and battery or a DUI on his record or anything like that. And, you know, this was, this was 30 years ago. I think the community is, is aware of this. It's certainly not something that he is ashamed of. I spoke with him this afternoon and asked him if I could preface this item with these comments, and he said, absolutely. I don't, I don't care. So, so anyway, just want to put that out on the table. You guys can certainly discuss this if you have concerns because of that, or any other concerns you might have. But, but tonight, my recommendation is Justice for this position.
I proudly move Justice Mantle be accepted as the...
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Butchlick. Are there any comments, questions, discussion?
Yeah, Justice sat, or I sat in his barber chair for six years, so I've known him for a long time.
Yep.
And, but this is new news to me. I just found out about it yesterday. I wonder how much of the community knows about this. And although, you're right, he's not committed a crime or anything like this, it's just, doesn't look good to me.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
And that motion will carry seven to one. Our next item tonight is Resolution Number 51 to Accept Funding from the Next Generation Housing Initiative in Washington County for a Housing Study by Tracy Cross and Associates. And John's going to take us through that.
Oh, we're on good. So as probably a number of you know about the Next Gen Housing Program with Washington County, they provide funding for development of Next Gen Housing, but they also have grants available for local communities to either rewrite their zoning codes, or a portion of them to allow for more flexibility of housing, but they also allow for grants for housing studies. And so a number of communities in West Bend have already taken advantage of that particular grant, and I think it's one of the conversations we've had with the county. And so the city did apply for the grant this fall, and it was granted by the committee over Washington County. So this item is just really city council accepting the grant from the county for those services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen. Any questions, discussion? Alderman Allen?
I'm, I'm glad that this is going beyond, you know, mid-scale, single-family. It's going to look at all of our housing stocks and how we might deal with that. So I think this is a much better plan than the last time Next Gen came to us.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
I agree. I think it's good that we study our options and what's available. Question I have is, as far as the grant, is there any co-pay on it or anything like that?
There's no actual monetary cost, except for my time talking to the county and the consultant to get the project done. We've provided them some data, some GIS maps, things like that. So fairly minimal amount of staff time.
Did they give us a timeframe, or is this a year-long thing, or a two-to-three-month thing?
Couple months.
Couple months?
I would expect it, end of spring, I would, or beginning of spring, sometime in the next few months.
And then do they come back and report out to this group?
They certainly can. We can certainly schedule a time where they could actually come and do a presentation. They could do also remotely, so we can schedule that. If you want to actually see a formal presentation, they'd be glad to do that.
Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Administrator Search Firm Discussion. So it was almost two weeks ago now that Jay informed us that he will be resigning from the city. And so it's, we've got a big task ahead of us and big shoes to fill in finding our next administrator. Part of, we have several options on how this could work. The first option is the city could take on this task themselves. It's a heavy lift to do that. What that would mean is the city would put together a kind of a community profile document. We would work as, as a council to determine the profile of the candidate that we're searching for, and then we would rely on our staff to help us post the job, to help collect applications, maybe answer questions from potential applicants. So that's kind of option number one. And I will say it is, it is a heavy lift to do that. Another option is to hire a firm, which is what, what I'm in favor of, and I'll just let you know that upfront. I went through this process on the school board twice, hiring a superintendent, and it's, it's quite similar. And the firms, their processes are also quite similar. So I, in your packet, I've got MGT, which used to be called Gov HR. This is actually the firm the city used when we hired Jay eight years ago. And I'm told that we've also used MGT a couple of other times, maybe for salary study, maybe a benefit study, that sort of thing. So the city, we are familiar, I'm not familiar with them, but our staff is familiar with this firm. This is the firm that Oshkosh just, just used this fall to hire their city manager. Lake Geneva is using this firm right now. I called the mayor of Oshkosh on Friday, and, and he had nothing but good things to say about their consultant. Lee is, was their consultant. And, and they really liked the process. The process involved engagement from community. They, they put out a community survey. They brought in small groups of community leaders. They brought in small groups of community leaders who met with the consultant. And then, of course, the consultant met with department heads, met with the council to put together that profile of the candidate that they're hoping to get. And then a firm like this, because this is what they do every day, they know where to post the jobs, they know how to put together kind of the community brochure, that sort of thing. And then applications actually go through the consultant, through the firm. So we're not collecting applications here. And like in Oshkosh's case, they got, I think, 35 applicants. And the consultant would narrow that 35 down to maybe the top 10, and then call a meeting with all of us and say, we'll quickly go through the, you know, the 25 that we don't think is a fit. And it could be because we all said we want someone with experience. Well, this candidate doesn't have any experience, and so that's why we put him in this pile. You can see every single applicant that comes in, and usually you kind of typically go through the ones that they put to the side, but you can dive deeper into those if you want. And then you, of course, look at the top 10, and from there, narrow it down to maybe the top three or four who are your finalists. And then, of course, the consultant then helps set up interviews. Oshkosh did a whole interview day where the chief of police and HR director took the finalists around the community, introduced them to community leaders. They sat down and had an interview with community leaders, an interview with department heads, and then an interview with the council. So that's kind of what the firm does, is they help coordinate all of that. The decision is ultimately up to the council on who you hire. It is possible you could get to the end of the process and interview three or four finalists and determine, we need to start over. That has happened in other communities, certainly. I guess I'm going to stop there. Are there any questions about, yeah, I'll start with Butchlick and then Allen.
Yes, I was part of this hiring when we hired Jay. And they are very thorough, very thorough. They'll sit down with each alderman, they will ask you what you're looking for. It is an outstanding group. And after eight years of Jay's stay here, I can't say we went wrong at all. Jay has done a fantastic job for the City of West Bend. He's definitely led, led this, led see, the word I'm trying to say is tongue-tied, but a legacy here. So I am 100% in going with this company again, because I remember it was a great, they're very thorough and they're really well to work with. I know it would be a major headache for our group to do it on our own, and they know where these people are that are interested in the job. We don't. And I think this is a great opportunity, and I agree with you, Joe, I think it's a great idea.
Alderman Allen?
Do we have a feel for what kind of a time, what the timeline looks like? And the second part of that question is going to be, do we have a feel for what the costs are going to be? In other words, is this going to need to go out for bid? I suspect it's going to be below the threshold where we have to competitively bid it, but I'm going to ask that now.
So this is in public construction, so there's no statutory requirement that you go out to bid? The city's general purchasing policy is to get RFPs, but given the circumstances, like you certainly can waive that requirement and move forward. That's purely a requirement that the Common Council has put in place. It's services, so there's no requirement that you go out for bid at all.
Okay. Let me answer your second question first.
Well, first question. He got the second.
Well, as it relates to costs, so MGT says $25,000. You will not spend more than $25,000. And they've got things like marketing and printing and things in their budget for like $4,000. If you don't use $4,000 for the printing and marketing, then they're only going to charge you $22,000. Oshkosh did not spend more than $25,000 with MGT, other than, what is not included in that is, one of their finalists was from Roanoke, Virginia, and they wanted to interview him in person. So they paid for airfare and a night or two in a hotel. That is not covered. Their consultant, Lee, is, I think, in, Jay, do you know Lee?
I do.
Is he in Northern Illinois?
He lives in Mecklenburg.
Oh, he lives in Mecklenburg, okay. So if the consultant needs to come in and spend the night, that's not covered. You might pay for a hotel, but I know that they did do some virtual things with him that he didn't need to be there in person. But you're not paying an hourly fee for him, but you would be paying if you want him to be here and, you know, he needs a hotel, that sort of thing. So does that answer your question?
For, as far as costs, no. The other piece of it is the timeline.
Is timeline. So they will keep the process moving, and some of it depends on if there's a decision that we need to make as it relates to, let's say narrowing down 35 applicants down to 10. If he's ready to go tomorrow, and we don't have our next council meeting for two more weeks, and we don't want to get together and meet, well, then that just adds two more weeks to the process. But if we're willing to have a special meeting, let's say on Thursday or Friday, then obviously the process moves along. You know, there could be some scheduling things as it relates to bringing in candidates for interviews, that sort of thing. Another piece could be, you know, if we hire an administrator from, let's just say, Roanoke, Virginia, who needs to put in a 60-day notice with their current employer, well, then we're not going to, our new person's not going to start for 60 days. Let's say Roanoke, Virginia, needs to move here before they start, that might take some time. So Mark Roloff announced his retirement, I want to say on July 1st-ish. They started the process in August, September, and Rebecca's starting now-ish. So, you know, it took them four or five months. I don't know that it's necessarily going to take us four or five months unless, again, the person we select needs to put in a 60-day notice, there's two months right there. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so I guess I have a question for Ian. How are, do we need to have, you know, a noticed event to, say, do the process? Or can we make a motion tonight to?
No, it's on for discussion.
It's on for discussion.
I think you can direct to move forward with entering into a contract with MGT, at least to get them moving.
I'll let the, I'd be willing to make a motion at this point.
Before you do that, let's keep discussion right now. Alderman Schmidt?
Regardless of the requirement to go out for bid, don't you think it's a good due diligence to get competitive bids? $25,000 is...
So I'll weigh in on this, that this is really not a, there's not a huge, like, number of firms to get quotes from. So it's really, there's not a whole lot of other options from an executive search position. This isn't like some other areas where it's like, oh, we can get 15 different quotes or whatever. It's really like MGT, PAA, and that's really about it.
Feel free to speak up, you know, this process as well.
Sure. I'll just share a couple of things maybe regarding timeline and Alderman Schmidt's question as far as the, Ian's right, there are not a lot of firms in this space. The two that he mentioned are one before you and another firm that's in Wisconsin. The fact that you've had PAA and they're kind of known, and you've had MGT and they're kind of a known entity, I think makes a lot of sense, so I agree. And I've talked to some of you about this that have asked me. I think they're a reputable firm. I think it's a really wise choice. Lee Shaborsky is a good dude, who's a former administrator and really does a nice job from recruitment, if that's who your principal is. The timeline, two months is kind of typical, so if from start to being able to say, all right, this is who we think we're going to bring in for final interviews, like kind of maximum situation. I know what went down in Oshkosh, they asked for a couple more steps, so I know that that timeframe took a little longer to recruit their, not only recruit, but then to select their ultimate manager that they went forward with. But it can go as fast, and I think one of the real success stories in recruitment of professional administration these days is if you have somebody in the queue early on, you might hear from Lee saying, you know, there's a couple of really solid individuals in this, we want to move quickly, they're in another recruitment, or they might be in another recruitment process somewhere else. And they might ask you to push that even faster than what you're thinking at this time. So be prepared for that as well. It can go slower, as the mayor mentioned, but it also could go faster if you end up with some solid candidates right out of the gate, and that's a great problem to have. I have shared with all of you that this is a position that individuals will apply for. This is a professionally-run organization, a lot of great department heads sitting here in the room that have done a ton of good things over the years. We have a lot of positives in West Bend and a, again, enviable position for somebody to seek after. So I'm confident that I'll answer any of the questions that you might have, but those are my thoughts.
Jay, do you know, because I know these firms go to conferences and things, and do you know costs? I mean, when I say $25,000, does that sound about right?
It sounds about right, yes.
Okay. We can...
I can share too that I know of at least one other community that got quoted 35 for a police chief search, so I think 25 is definitely in the reasonable ballpark.
We can absolutely ask firms to come in, put out an RFP. I know this firm and PAA are the Wisconsin ones. Baker Tilly is more of a national one. Whether or not, like, someone like that would even, you know, respond to an RFP, I don't know. And I'm open for anything. If we want to put out an RFP and have firms, ask firms to even come and present on their process, we can certainly do that. And, you know, go from there, yeah.
We don't know what we don't know, and I think it's good due diligence to see what's out there.
Sure. Yeah, Alderman Allen?
I would simply point to the fact that we've used this firm before to satisfy our need for an administrator, and I think there's substantial evidence that they did well.
Alderman Sternig?
I would tend to agree with that perspective. From a budgetary standpoint, $25,000 may seem like a large number. I think it's an extremely wise investment in the future of the City of West Bend as it relates to naming the person who is going to be running our city. And we were very, very fortunate when we went through this process with them the last time to land Jay, who's done a tremendous job of leading this tremendous group of department leaders that we have in the City of West Bend. From a budget standpoint, that's nothing that concerns me greatly. Having also played in the executive search space, both professionally as well as having clients in that space, $25,000 is extremely reasonable, given the salary and benefit structure or level of a city administrator. In my time, dependent upon the type of search, it could be anywhere from 25 to 35% of salary alone. So $25,000 to work with a firm that specializes in hiring these types of people, I think is extremely reasonable, and one that I would highly recommend that we move forward with immediately. Not that time is not of the essence. Obviously, the sooner we have a new administrator named and in place and operating with our team, that is going to be to our benefit. That being said, it should not be the sole reason we move forward expeditiously, but it does not hurt to have somebody named sooner than later.
Any more comments, discussions, parts?
I feel the price is, it's not cheap, it's not going to be. But we're also looking for an executive search of a multimillion-dollar operation here, and we want somebody that's got the contacts. Putting out for RFP is going to add time to the timeline. We did that with the Firehouse, which we had to, but we wound up going with somebody we knew, which they're in the ballpark, and they did a great job. I like the known factor, that's always a good thing. With just two people out there, the other one, they weren't really looking either. I mean, word went out that we have an opening, and they aren't saying, here's our services. So I don't know if that really happens. But any other thing too is in my past experience with some organizations doing executive search, the first candidate isn't always the first one or the one that takes the job, and that's let you back too. So keep that in mind, that may happen. I think it's a good price. I think it's a time, just it's something if we can do it with the services clause, we go ahead and do.
Any other comments? Alderman Allen?
I'd like to make a motion to begin the process with MGT.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion and a second. Ian, I assume this is directing a signature on a contract, is that?
Yes.
Directing the, because we do not have a contract that I would just say not to exceed $25,000.
Correct.
After attorney review, okay?
I can amend my motion if that's...
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to proceed with MGT on a not-to-exceed $25,000 services contract.
And I will second that again.
Okay. Any more comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
One no, so that will pass seven to one. Our next item is Aqua Park naming rights. Mike?
Good evening. This evening, our department is requesting to enter into an agreement with Westbury Bank for the naming rights of the Aqua Park in Regner Park. In 2026, Westbury Bank will celebrate their company's 100th anniversary. Westbury Bank would like to celebrate this achievement by supporting a new community signature project. We are very fortunate that Westbury Bank would like to partner with our department and our organization and support the development of the new Aqua Park in Regner Park. If approved, this agreement would establish the Westbury Bank Aqua Park for a period of seven years. Highlights of this agreement include naming rights, including a Westbury Bank logo on four Aqua Park obstacles. The Westbury Bank logo will be included in promotional items. Annually, the Westbury Bank will have access to the Beach House Community Room on a date that Juneteenth is observed. The bank is closed that day, so they would like to offer the Beach House Community Room to their employees, and we would offer some Aqua Park tickets for that day as a thank you to that organization. Westbury Bank will also offer 150 co-branded tickets to, co-branded tickets to their customers at their branch locations. Basically, they would have those tickets at their branches, customers come in, do business, they would give them those tickets for free. They come to Regner Park, use those tickets, we get reimbursed for it. For us, it's a great opportunity, obviously revenue, but it's also a great opportunity where we might get some people through the Aqua Park that might not know about it, maybe never heard of it because it's all brand new, things like that. So again, for us, marketing, getting the word out any way we can, this is another great opportunity for us to do that. The Westbury Bank will also partner with our department to offer some educational presentations on financial literacy and fraud awareness. They would like to do some programs. They're working with our recreation supervisor, Ryan Schmidt, on those programs in this agreement. Also, finally, Westbury Bank is committing $60,000 in financial support for this project. An initial $25,000 commitment upon receipt of the signed agreement, and then $5,000 per year after that. Also, Westbury Bank, that, I mean, it's not part of this agreement, as they celebrate this project, we're going to get additional marketing and focus on what we're doing down in Regner Park. Westbury Bank has also offered to support different events down in Regner Park with volunteers, in-kind service, things like that. So those are all the things that are not in this agreement that will help support what we do. The Park and Recreation Commission unanimously approved this agreement. I would like to say we are very fortunate that Westbury Bank chose the Aqua Park for their centennial celebration project. Westbury Bank has historically been a partner supporting many community projects in West Bend, and we look forward to growing this partnership with them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Alderman Allen.
After giving you such a hard time during previous business, I proudly support Westbury Bank as the named sponsor and move that this be adopted.
I second that.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. We'll give it to Alderwoman Sizer. Comments, questions, discussion? Alderman Sternig.
I just can't thank Westbury Bank enough for their continued support of our city, our community. And this is just another thing that they are doing to show their support for West Bend, our community, our citizens. And having always been a strong partner and community member, I think is very, very important. And I can't thank them enough for this generous donation and opportunity. So thank you to Westbury Bank.
I'd say the same thing. And they're also just wonderful, wonderful people. The leadership at Westbury and their branch managers and lenders and things are just great, great people and can't thank them enough as well. Alderman Schmidt.
I'm looking forward to seeing if we're going to be profitable for the first time in a long time.
So are we. Actually, we really are looking forward to this opportunity with Aqua Park and Regner Park. The Westbury Bank celebration is just part of it. Earlier this evening, we mentioned the Friends of Parks. The Sunrise Rotary is also committed a financial commitment to this project. We are excited about winter coming to an end so we can do our dredging work and get our anchors, our mooring anchors in and all that good stuff. And the equipment's been ordered. I think it's going to be a huge success. I think it's going to be a real huge success for the community. And I think we're going to turn or make the swim pond in Regner Park a destination like it used to be.
Thanks for your diligence on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Allen?
Just one more shout out for Westbury Bank as if there's not enough. They've been a big supporter of Visit West Bend. And they were a big supporter during the downtown reconstruction. They provided free billboard signage for actually longer than they committed to. And if you've ever priced putting a billboard on a major artery like a freeway, it was a substantial commitment.
Seeing no more comments, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Our next item is a resolution, Resolution Number 72, SV 25-01, preliminary resolution to vacate approximately 750 feet of Wingate Street, each of Stockhausen Lane by the Department of Community Development. Jim?
Good evening. Tonight, we're asking the council to adopt the preliminary resolution for that street vacation. It's the west of 750 feet of Wingate Street. This has helped facilitate for the redevelopment of that area for Weenter Street campus. So adopting this tonight would also set the public hearing, which we're asking for a public hearing on April 7. That would be the final action item for the street vacation. As a part of this, we will also be working with Ian to send over a LIS pendant for the notification to proceed. And then we'll also be sending out notices to the property owners for the street vacation, along with getting any kind of needed easements out of the vacation area also.
Thanks, Jim.
Motion over.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions?
What's the timeframe on this again, as far as anticipated vacation?
Yeah. So the starting is tonight. Then we will take it and send the LIS pendant to the county for recording. There's a minimum, I believe, 45-day in between the setting of the public hearing and holding the public hearing. So that's why the hearing is actually set out to April 7.
Good question. Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Our next item is ordinance number 29, permanent relocation of District One and District Eight polling locations.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Just one thing. It's my district and I am really happy to see that it's moved in a different place because the parking is atrocious at Meadowbrook Manor. And I'm sure the people don't appreciate us constantly walking in their room. But this is a great move and thank you very much for doing that.
Moving a polling location is not an easy thing. And obviously, they got to be in districts and you've got to find a place with parking and accessibility and space. And so I appreciate all the hard work that went into this for these two locations. Alderman Allen?
As I understand it, these will be the polling locations, not for tomorrow, but for the spring election?
That is correct. It would start April 1st with approval. It is the state statute that a 30-day notice has to, or approval has to be at least 30 days before an election.
Good question. So show up to your current location tomorrow.
How will that be communicated to the constituents?
We will be sending out postcards to every resident in those two locations. It'll also be put in the newspaper. And my vote will be updated with the location. So anyone who checks their voter information, it will be on that as well, plus our social media. So our Facebook and our weekly newsletter.
Will there be a notice on the current location to redirect people if they end up going to the wrong place?
That's a great point. Yes. We will ask if we can put up something on the doors of both of those locations for the April 1st election to redirect.
Thank you, Jim. Any more questions? Alderman Allen?
Were this not to receive a unanimous vote, would this would come back in two weeks? Would that be outside of the 30-day window?
Yes, it would be.
Can we change the rules to allow for a non?
You can make a motion to waive the unanimous requirement, the second reading.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to waive that.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to suspend the rules on an ordinance having to be approved unanimously in the first reading. So if this, we will first take a vote on whether or not to suspend the rule. And then if that passes, then we can vote on this. And even if it's not unanimous, it will pass.
So that just applies to this particular issue?
Correct. Just applies to this item. Any questions on suspending the rules? We're going to vote on that first. So all in favor of suspending the rules that this item can be approved on a first reading tonight, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So now we're back to approval of this ordinance. We've had a motion and a second. Any more comments, questions, discussion? All in favor of permanently relocating District One and District Eight polling locations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next is an ordinance to repeal and replace municipal code section 2.11, salaries and expenses of aldermen and mayor. If you give me just a second here, this is on page 80 of your packet and was updated based on the motion that was made at our first meeting. And that would have been the first reading of that, of this ordinance change. So today is the second reading of this ordinance change. So again, on a second reading, it does not have to be unanimous in order for it to pass. So I'll give you a minute to review page 80 of your packet if you'd like. And then I'll turn it over to the floor right now.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. So there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the repeal and replace of municipal code section 2.11, salaries and expense allowance, as it's stated in your packet on page 80. Any comments, questions, discussions?
I have not changed my opinion on this.
Any more comments, questions, discussion?
I'll make a comment. I'm going to agree with it mainly because I think it's only fair to all concerned. For one thing, it doesn't apply to any of us on the council right now that won't go into effect for two years. So it's not like we're voting on something for ourselves. But if 22 years ago, the city decided that it was fair to compensate, you know, council members for things like mileage and time and everything else that goes into the job, I think it's only fair that we look at it. I crunched the numbers a little bit. And if we increase it to what we had planned or what we planned, it works out to 1.6% increase per year over the last 22 years because we're looking at 2027. I don't think a 1.6% increase annually for 20-plus years is unreasonable. So I'm certainly in favor of it.
Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Any more comments, questions, discussion?
I would like to request a roll call on this.
Alderman Schmidt requested a roll call. I can certainly do that. Seeing none, I will call the roll. Alderwoman Sizer.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Sparts.
No.
Alderman Burquist.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Did I call everybody? That motion will carry seven to one. No, six to two. Jeez.
Six to two.
Hang on a second.
Counting.
Alderman Schmidt was a no and Alderman Sparts was a no. So I would like that to be recorded in the minutes because we did a roll call. That motion will carry. Six to two. All right, we'll move on to reports tonight. Our library board from January 21st.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on the 21st of January. We opened with the call to order and approval of the consent agenda. Financial reports for November and December of last year were given. We needed to take action on a CD that the library has that was maturing. So the board chose to take out a new one rather than roll the old one over due to a higher rate that we were able to get. So we approved that. Director's report, Steve told us of the library's upcoming social media strategy. He also invited us to attend the library legislative day in Washington, not Washington, Madison. Wrong legislation, okay. So Steve also introduced a new employee, Lindsay, who's our new circulation manager. So welcome to Lindsay, to the library. Recently, some patrons of the library were really disappointed when they heard that Hoopla, if you know what Hoopla is. It's a library digital media service that we discontinued. The reason? Higher costs. In fact, the increase was actually 864% over what it had been. We just couldn't continue at that rate, but we do have options to fill the void. The library president's report, Deb asked us for suggestions for board education time during our meetings, stuff like state statutes that pertain to library boards and things like that for our education. Agenda items that we discussed were the library's donation policy, how much we take in and what kind of donations we'll accept. And the parking lot made the list again. So Steve talked with Doug, looking for more information on that matter. The next meeting is actually tomorrow, February 18.
Thank you. Plan Commission.
Plan Commission was held on February 4. We approved a minutes, held a public hearing and approved a conditional use permit for Trillium Tattoo at 544 South Main Street. We had a site plan to give an approval to renovate an existing building and construct a new garage by XS LLC at 261 and 267 South Main Street. We had a certified survey map that we approved, which was a two lots at the northeast corner of River Shores Drive and Shore Lane. And that was requested by Riverbend Development LLC. We had a approval for a preliminary plat at Creeks Edge Edition Number One for an 18-lots, single-family subdivision, which is out at the location of Clearview Drive in Daisy by Diamond Holdings. We approved a preliminary plat for D Farms Estates for seven single-family lots, residences, resident, excuse me, for seven single-family residences on the northeast corner of 18th Avenue and Patricia Drive by Georgiana D. We approved to move forward with the street vacation that we voted on tonight. And we also think we set, yeah, we wound up having to set the public hearing for that for April. We annexed 108 and 103 acres by F Street Development on 2585 East Rusko Drive. That'll be part of the Southern Industrial Park. We had discussion and a recommendation to set a public hearing for a change in land use from two-family residential to single-family of 9.8 acres at East Kilborn and Edgewater Drive, which is the Creekside subdivision. We had discussion and also set a public hearing for zoning change for those same nine-point acres. And we adjourned.
Thank you. Bid Board meeting.
The February bid board met. We had a quorum with three members excused, absent. The minutes were accepted. The financial plan was reviewed and accepted. We had a report on working with Blingle, which is our new holiday vendor. It was very positive. So they're highly recommended to continue in that role. They basically hit it out of the park, to use a baseball metaphor. They did a great job. There was a, I was honored and thanked for my five years of service on the bid board. I'll be leaving the bid board in April after the new election. We had a review of a contract proposal from Shady Lane Greenhouses for some plantings that are done. That also included a discussion of the planters throughout downtown by John Fellowes, the community development director. Because there was time criticality on executing the contract, we temporarily authorized our director and president to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,200 to make the final vendor selection if they could get the questions answered. There was a report by Larry Porter on the bid strategic planning program. He discussed the survey that's been sent out and we'll be reporting back the results when the survey closes to the bid board. There was also a report on the bid facade grant committee that I chair. And we had five applications for six projects. And we were meeting the very next day. So the results of that will be in the next report. And then we received a report from Noel Brown and Leon O'Donnell Block from the Bend, talking about big things that are coming up and some of their schedule highlights. Most notable is the fact that the city of West Bend is a title sponsor for the block party events this year. So our name will be up on the big banners and it'll kick off sort of book and the music on main season. And now, moving on to the next day, because one doesn't rest, the facade grant meeting, we met to discuss awarding... The facade grant meeting, we met to discuss awarding grants. We had, again, six projects, five, or six projects from five entities. We had $30,000 to award. We awarded $15,000 to the Boys and Girls Club. They, they submitted effectively two projects. We approved the...
Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Big, did I not get it?
Yeah, that's right. The Boys and Girls Clubs are down the street a little bit.
Okay. His, his wife. So, we approved, we approved their facade improvements to the river-facing, which is the back of their building, and we went back to several other entrants with some questions, some additional questions, and agreed to meet in a month, which is basically March 11th, and will review awarding the remainder of our grant money at that time. So, we may have some additional grants, otherwise the, the ungranted amount will move into our reserve for the next year's facade grants.
Very good. Thank you. Jay, any administrator report tonight?
Okay, thanks.
Any other Alderman announcements? I'll just, yes, Alderman Allen?
Don't forget, tomorrow is the primary. There are things to vote on in all, all eight of our districts. In District One and District Eight, it'll be the existing polling location. And thank your, thank your poll workers. Apparently, there is quite a shortage right now with rampant sickness floating around, so.
Alderman Sternig, you got something?
West Bend Little League will be host, hosting their tryouts slash evaluations on Saturday, March 1st, and Saturday, March 8th at the West Bend High School South Gym. So, any community members who have children interested in playing Little League baseball, go to westbendlittleleague.org or dot com, I'm not sure which one that is now, just Google West Bend Little League, and you can find the registration forms on that site.
Great. I'll just remind everybody that Bockfest is coming up quickly. It's on March 1st. I saw somebody in our communications department looked at a forecast that said it's supposed to be 45 and sunny, so weather hopefully will be good again for us this year. West Bend, it's, it's bockfestwb.com to buy your tickets. You do need to buy your tickets ahead of time, and you also get a $5 voucher to use at participating stores and restaurants downtown that weekend. It's a great event coming up on March 1st. Alderman Allen?
There's also a shuttle bus, a free shuttle bus that'll be running between Regner Park and downtown, so if you wish to make use of that, that's sponsored by the Garden Lounge again this year. So, if you want to spend your, your Bockfest dollars, you know, the day of Bockfest, there's a, a free shuttle that will keep you from getting into trouble with...
There's also a designated driver program. I guess I just wanted to share that with our community, too. Yes, it's a music festival that's faced, or based on beer and music and a good time, but there's also a designated driver program that if you, you arrive and you share with the, the gate folks, that you're not going to be consuming alcohol at all. They'll give you a wristband, and you can drink all the free pop and, and water that you want to ensure that your group gets home safely. So, just wanted to add that as well. Thanks for bringing up Bockfest. It's an exciting event.
Thank you to all of our folks, especially in DPW. They were working very, very hard over the weekend. We all know the snow seemed like it never stopped. You know, they, they worked their tails off. I know there was a shift that was up for almost 30 hours plowing snow. If anybody in the community has any sort of positive or negative feedback, please give our DPW folks a call. We can handle that type of feedback a lot quicker than, than Facebook can. You know, you know, certainly people like to take to Facebook, but if, if there truly is an issue with something out on the street, or, or plowing, or not plowing, whatever it may be, if you give us a call, we can handle that a lot quicker than, than Facebook can. But again, thank you to the, the patience of our community and the hard work of our, of our city folks that were out there really busting, busting hard over the weekend, so. We do have an item appropriate for closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c), which is considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And our discussion tonight is the interim administrator discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Allen? Great. I, any comments, questions?
We need to do a...
I will call the roll. Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderwoman Seizer.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Burquist.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
We are now adjourned into closed session. We will not have any action after closed session tonight, and so we will adjourn from our closed session.
Thank you.
Got one, one and one. Yes, you got one, you got one.
I motioned for them.
You did.
I'm the mayor.
At least I had you down for that. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
No, we're going to do tomorrow.